Good afternoon. I will call to order the August 14th meeting of the Minneapolis City Planning Commission. My name is Matt Brown. I serve as President of the Commission. I'm joined today by Commissioners Magrino, Slack, Sweetsie, Lukey Pierre, Vreeland, and Rockwell. Our first item of business is to approve the actions from the July 31st meeting. Commissioners may have a motion to approve those actions.
A second.
Motion and a second, all in favor. And that motion carries. Our next item of business is to sort through the agenda. You can find hard copies of the agenda in the hallway. We'll determine which items will be considered on the consent agenda, which we will discuss, and which will be continued to another meeting. So, starting at the top of the agenda, item one is a registered land survey, 24 University Avenue Northeast. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item one? See, no one will put item one on consent. Item two is an Islamic center at 2824 13th Avenue South. Several applications there. We will continue that item to the August 28th meeting, so if anyone is here for that, it will be considered on August 28th. Item three is the 3100 Lake Street Apartments at 3100 West Lake Street. We will continue that item to the September 18th meeting while we wait for some more information there, so if anyone is here for that, it will be considered on September 18th. Item four is at 3450 Grand Avenue South. That is a rezoning. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item four? See, no one will put item four on consent. That's at 3450 Grand Avenue. Okay, you are here, so we can discuss item four. Item five is the Indeed Parking Lot at 1403 Quincy Street Northeast and 814 14th Avenue Northeast. Two applications for parking lot there. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item five? See, no one will put that on consent. Item six is at 301 through 311 East Lake Street. Several applications for a meeting hall there, and that item will also be continued to the August 28th meeting. Moving along. Item seven is at 2201 Blaisdell Avenue. Several applications for a new multifamily building there. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item seven? See, no one will put item seven on consent. And finally, item eight is at 80 Broadway Street Northeast. Several applications for a new multifamily building there. We'll discuss item eight, although just so I have a sense, is anyone here to speak on item eight? All right, so we do have someone, so we'll discuss item eight. So, our agenda as amended is as follows. Items one, five, and seven will be on consent. We'll discuss items four and eight. Items two and six will be continued to the August 28th meeting, and item three will be continued to the September 18th meeting. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? We have a motion and a second, all in favor. And that motion carries. Next, we'll consider our committee the whole consent agenda, and Vice President Slack, do you have an update on that?
Thank you, President Brown. We heard two items that the August 3, 2017 committed the whole. The first item was a series of land sales located at 4800 Goldfax Avenue North, 3439 Fremont Avenue North, 3734 Fremont Avenue North, and 4338 Knox Avenue North. And the second item was a series of land sales at 5348 Riverview Road, 5364 Riverview Road, 5368 Riverview Road, and 5118 East 54th Street. The recommended motion is to approve the staff report that the items are consistent with the Minneapolis plan.
All right. We have a motion to find those items consistent with the Minneapolis plan. Is there a second? Motion and a second, all in favor. And that motion carries. Next, may I have a motion to continue items two and six to the August 28th meeting? We have a motion and a second, all in favor. And that motion carries. Next, may I have a motion to continue item three to the September 18th meeting? We have a motion and a second, all in favor. And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to the public hearing portion of the meeting, and at this time, I will open the public hearing for the items on the consent agenda. Again, that is items one, five, and seven. Is anyone wishing to speak on any of those items? Again, one, five, or seven. See, no one. I will close the public hearing and may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. We have a motion and a second, all in favor. And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our two items for discussion. We'll start with item four, and staff is Ms. Wallace.
President Brown, Commissioners. I will just go over this quickly. This project is a proposal to rezone a parcel at 3450 Grand Avenue South. This is a vacant parcel that was created through the minor subdivision of the property to the north, 3446 Grand Avenue South, and that was approved by the Planning Commission in February. And so, the applicant during the subdivision process had proposed a duplex at the site, and through some feedback from the Neighborhood Association, had amended his proposal, which we're looking at now, to rezone the site from R2B to R3. And so, the site is in the Lindale neighborhood and Ward 8. It's not in any small area plans. Here's the site, and here's another view. So, as you can see, it's currently vacant. So, the applicant is proposing a two-story triplex that has the same footprint as the initial duplex that was proposed in February, with the addition of a third unit in the basement. The project has received a letter of support, which you'll find in your packets, from the Lindale Neighborhood Association, and it was at their request that the applicant is applying for the rezoning to add some additional rental units for families. So, here are some renderings of the proposed building. And so, the applicant had applied to rezone from R2B to R3, and staff finds that that would be appropriate. As you can see from the zoning map, the site is directly adjacent to two R5 districts, and there's another R5 district just a couple of parcels away. And the mix in the neighborhood is single-family homes, duplexes, and multifamily homes in the immediate vicinity, and so, this project to add an additional rental unit would fit in with the character of the neighborhood. So, staff does recommend approval. Are there any questions?
All right, thank you. Are there any questions of staff? If there are none, I'll open the public hearing on this item, and I don't know if the applicant is in attendance. If there's anything you'd like to add, feel free to come to the microphone and add that, and if you don't mind stating your name and address for the record.
My name is Bruce Brunner, and this initially came about through the Lindale Neighborhood Association. At the first meeting, numerous people said, "Well, since you're building units that are more than the one- or two-bedroom units that a lot of the new construction is, you're building family-type of units." Because I was originally building four-bedroom units, they said, "Is it possible to add more units because there's a lack of units available to families?" And I said, "Well, it's very difficult. You have to go through zoning." I said, "But it may be possible to do three-three-bedroom units." So, essentially, I'm keeping the exact same footprint, the exact same above-ground size, and just having a garden apartment added. It passed unanimously twice at Lindale Neighborhood Association with over 20 people.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions of the applicant? If there are none, we can move on to any other speakers. I know we have at least one person, and you can come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Remington. Oh, loud. I have a loud voice. And I live next door at 3444 Grand Avenue South. I do have objections to this unit being developed as it's currently situated. I don't believe that Ms. Wallace's comment that the structure of that particular building will fit into the character of the neighborhood. I live on that block. I live right next door in between 34th and 35th. It's primarily single-family dwellings. There are a lot of rental units north, south of us, and behind us, but that street is primarily what appears to be single-family homes. The duplex that is currently next door looks like a single-family home, although it's a duplex. I think the character of our neighborhood will be changed irreparably, and we'll never get that back. Now, I'm understanding that the rezoning and the lot has already been approved by the city. I have some concerns over the lot. It's not a flat lot. The lot is on a hill, and there's a small retaining wall, and I just can't visualize how another building of a similar size could actually fit on the lot that's being developed without some massive retaining wall being built. Those are my two least concerns. My biggest concern is this, is we've got a small city lot. All the lots in Minneapolis, South Minneapolis, are small. And now, we've divided it into two, and we are going to create, in a very, very small area, an incredibly high density of people. My building is a fourplex. It's a 100-year-old fourplex, and that's what the character of the buildings are on that block. There's hardly any new buildings. There might be one, there's one apartment structure down at the end of the block, near the Lindale School that is not 100 years old. But other than that, all of these houses that are currently on this block are old, turn-of-the-century homes. So, in my fourplex, there are only five people who live in that unit, or live in the entire building. We have four off-site parking spots. In this one-city lot, there's going to be a duplex and a triplex. The triplex is going to have three-three-bedroom units, so that could have anywhere between nine to 15 people living in that structure. The next-door building that's currently there is a duplex, and I've never been inside, but that could probably house anywhere from four to eight people. So, right next door to a building that only houses five people, and the rest of the community is single-family dwellings, we can have anywhere between 12 and 24 people living on these two lots that used to be one-city lot. I'm incredibly concerned about the volume of people. I think it will, again, I think it's just going to completely change the character and nature of that block. I think everybody's home, the values of the homes on that block are going to, it will be devalued. They will not increase in value by making that block a high-density rental place that will be clearly visible that it will be rental units. And I'm speaking for all the owners at 3444 Grand Avenue South.
All right, thank you. Is there?
And I do have another concern, since I'm here, I might as well say it, is that the way that the property is kept right now is awful. And I'm not, you know, that I have concerns about, too. The quality of care that's been put in that building since it was bought has been none. And if that is going to continue, I'm sure everybody else on the block has concerns about that as well.
All right, thanks. And is there anyone else who'd like to speak on item four? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, and Commissioners, we just have the one application before us. Are there any further questions, or would someone like to start things off with a motion? Commissioner Rockwell.
I will start us off with a motion to approve staff recommendation to rezone 3450 Grand Avenue South.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Rockwell.
Yeah, you know, I hear the concerns. I'm familiar with this area since I live on 35th and Pillsbury. I get the boss on this corner, and I think this is an area which has seen a lot of commercial development in recent years. You know, there's a commercial spot down the street on 36th and Grand, which, you know, has had some struggles with filling a vacancy for a couple of years, I think, because there hasn't been the density to support that. And now, you know, it's filling up, and we're seeing some increased density, and I do think that this particular street is a good street for adding density. And the fact that there's a bus, there are multiple buses on that street is, you know, potential for alleviating some of the possible traffic from this development. And I think it's a good move for the city, and from my own observations of the neighborhood, you know, it is a real mix on these blocks in between 34th and 35th of apartment buildings, of duplexes, of triplexes, and I think that this will blend in. It will be a newer construction. That's certainly true. But, you know, what are the goals in the comprehensive plans in the city? Is to grow the city, so that's why I have put forth a motion to approve.
Commissioner Lukey Pierre.
Yeah, I have a question for staff, actually, a few questions. One would be, it was hard to tell because our packets are kind of fuzzy, but what are the overall dimensions of the lot in question?
So, the lot is, it's just under 5,000 square feet, 4,654 square feet, and I don't know if I have the exact lot dimensions in here, although...
35 by 121. Okay. And then, what in R3 is the maximum height allowed, and also the maximum lot coverage?
In R3, the maximum height would be two and a half stories, and maximum lot coverage, I believe, is 45%.
Cool, because I just asked, because I note in the packet, the one thing I did see was that the front elevation had a roof pitch that had a, could be 612, could be 1012 question, and I didn't know whether that made a difference, but it seemed as though. If we're talking about appropriate context, the higher pitch might be more architecturally appropriate for the area as opposed to a tall building like that having such a low pitch as a 612. So, just wasn't sure if that was influenced at all by the maximum height or not, but wanted to ask.
Okay, great. And just since this is a, it is a fewer-than-five-unit building, it will go through administrative site plan review, so we really haven't had those conversations yet.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any further discussion? If there's none, I can just add, this particular lot is, while it's currently zoned R2B, is directly adjacent to higher R zoning. There's a lot of R5 in this area, so I think it's a very logical place to allow for somewhat increased density. You know, while neither 35th Street nor Grand Avenue is a designated corridor, they are, you know, relatively busy streets and have some characteristics of corridors that can accommodate a little bit more density. And I certainly understand the speaker's concerns about the design of the building. For a rezoning application, we don't actually have the ability to tie this sort of approval to the architecture of a building or anything else, so that is really, they're simply bound by the zoning code for that. So, if there is no further discussion, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call it roll.
Vender?
Aye.
Lukey Pierre?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Vreeland?
Aye.
70.
And that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item four. Next item for discussion is item eight at 80 Broadway Street Northeast. Staff is Mr. Crandall. We saw this at Committee of the Hall a number of weeks ago. Maybe you could go over some of the outstanding issues and any changes since that time.
Peter Crandall, Senior City Planner with CPED Land Use. The project that we'll be discussing tonight is located at 80 Broadway Street Northeast. This is in the St. Anthony West neighborhood, adjacent to the Sheridan neighborhood. Current zoning on the site is C2. The project is located on a somewhat triangular-shaped block that sits at the intersection of Broadway Street Northeast and Marshall Street Northeast, both of which are adopted community corridors in the Minneapolis Comprehensive Plan. It shares the block with a small business currently, a restaurant. And the site is also located within the Grain Belt Activity Center, an adopted activity center with the Minneapolis Comprehensive Plan. This map identifies the community corridors in the area, which include the two Broadway and Marshall at the intersection of the site, as well as Second Street Northeast, which is a high-frequency transit corridor. The project qualifies for the parking reduction due to its proximity to high-frequency transit. It also identifies a nearby neighborhood commercial node. The project itself is a 98-unit residential building. It's functionally a six-story building, but because of the way that the zoning code measures height, and specifically the height of the elevator overrun and mechanical equipment on the roof, it's considered an eight-story building per the zoning code at 89 feet. The applicant is proposing 49 parking spaces. That meets the 0.5 ratio parking requirement for the site. Those spaces are accommodated in one level of underground parking and one level of at-grade parking, both of which are accessed off of 11th Avenue Northeast. The project is proposing a significant amount of landscaping that would enhance the public realm around the site, including planting several canopy trees and shrubs between Broadway Streets and the public right-of-way adjacent to the project. Some elevations of the project, and then some renderings. Staff has consulted as a part of the project analysis with the St. Anthony West Small Area Plan. This plan was received and filed by the City Council in spring of this year, was not formally adopted, as most small-area plans are, due to its proximity to the work that's being done on the Comprehensive Plan, and at staff's recommendation that it be more of an advisory document than a formal amendment to the current Comprehensive Plan. But staff did weigh some of the recommendations in the plan in our analysis, one of which is that the future land use for the site plan recommends be maintained as mixed use, and it does call for some storefront retail on the site, specifically at the corners of Broadway and Marshall, and 11th and Marshall. You can see the site is located here, and this map is taken from the Small Area Plan. So, the applications before you with the project, the applicant is seeking rezoning from C2 to C3A. A conditional use permit is required to increase the maximum building height. A variance is required to increase the maximum FAR from 3.24 to 4.48, and then a variance to decrease the minimum rear yard. In this case, the rear yard is considered the yard between this project and the adjacent restaurant site. The applicant's seeking a reduction of that yard from 15 feet to 10 feet. That yard is there due to the presence of residential windows on the project. And then, site plan review. As a consequence of the project being located within an activity center adjacent to two community corridors, and in consideration of the guidance in the Small Area Plan, staff came to a consensus to recommend that the FAR variance be conditioned with the applicant providing a commercial space of no less than 900 square feet at the ground floor, either along the Broadway Street Northeast or Marshall Street Northeast elevations. Staff feels that there is enough space at the ground floor and that there's enough policy to compel the applicant to comply with that requirement. That concludes my summary. I'll take any questions.
Okay. Commissioners, are there any questions of staff? Commissioner Rockwell.
Peter, can you talk a little bit about what, maybe this is getting into a question for the applicant as well, but when you talked about retail with staff, so, you know, I'm looking at the first-floor layout plan, and there's a yoga room and an exercise room, which are presumably, and if I remember from Committee of the Hall, for the residents. And we talked at Committee of the Hall on a different project last week, or a couple weeks ago, and there's a senior housing project that had a beauty salon that was for the residents. So, it was an internal thing, but they had a door to the outside to allow for programming with outside vendors as well, which is an interesting kind of splitting the difference where it's a little bit of both. I mean, were there discussions of what exactly we mean by retail? Because I remember in this Committee of the Hall meeting in particular, we talked about, you know, what do we mean by activating the street in today's retail environment? And, you know, I don't know, but was that a subject for staff discussion?
It was to a certain extent, I think, and we've also discussed with the applicant the possibility of maintaining some of those proposed ground-floor uses that would have been kind of more resident-focused and making them a public-facing function, so a publicly-accessible yoga studio, for example. But we would leave that up to the applicant in terms of, you know, how marketable the space is for different kinds of uses. Basically, it's become the practice of staff, particularly in considering significant FAR variances, to encourage applicants or require them to provide for public-facing, neighborhood-serving, commercial and retail uses that would be served by the increased population that's resulting from approved projects in the area, and to facilitate the development and full fruition of the activity center that the project is located in. I think staff feels that commercial space has a higher public function than resident amenity space at the ground floor.
And I agree. I guess what I'm asking in sort of a roundabout way is, I mean, there's a line, there's a microphone there, too. There's a line at which we would consider a space, like, public-facing, commercial versus not, right? I mean, if a yoga, just, I'm using yoga studios as an example, this sort of policy discussion, I think, will be relevant to our vote. The yoga studio is open for one hour a week for a public class. Like, is that public-facing? Or does it have to be 20 hours? Or, right, and so, I just, or does it have to be designed so that if there is a market for that, it can be segmented off, but there's not a requirement that it be? These are...
I think that's probably like a business licensing question. I'm not really sure what the hours requirements would be. I don't know that we have any from a zoning perspective, but...
Well, I'm asking from a, I'm not asking from a zoning perspective. Well, I'm asking from a, I'm not asking from a zoning perspective. I'm asking from a policy perspective.
Mr. Wittenberg, did you have a...
Which is, you know, I mean, this is, we're all going to have different answers here, but since you had a detailed discussion about this with staff, I'm asking you. You know, what's the tipping point between a private use and a public use? Or is it a design feature? And I'm not asking for you to reference the zoning code.
I think that's a very interesting question. I don't know that we've come to define what that tipping point is. I think it's becoming a bigger topic among staff and other planners that retail, in particular as a commercial function, is kind of struggling. And that is something that we've relied on a lot to activate ground floor, the ground floor in mixed-use projects. And so we may need to, you know, address in our thinking about how we activate buildings in these districts and on these corridors in new ways. But right now, commercial space is kind of the catch-all.
You'd think of a commercial space as like something that requires a commercial license.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And Commissioners, if I could just weigh in on that, I think, I can see where, in some circumstances, there would be some gray area, and you referenced the senior housing project, where that does seem to pose some, some questions about whether that's a public or private function, but practically speaking, it's typically pretty clear when something is open to the public and generally intended to be a commercial use rather than an amenity that primarily serves the residents of the building.
Right. No, and I agree, you know, but I think there's also, I mean, there are increasingly gray areas like that beauty parlor or the cafe on the so-called Woonerf off of Washington Avenue, which has a lot of 90-degree parking stalls for a Woonerf. But that is, I think, also a cafe that, you know, closes at 5:00 PM and is, and is supposed to be their part, kind of as a dining hall for, what I believe is another senior housing complex. But they sell coffee. So, you know, I wasn't asking necessarily for a hard answer, but I'm just trying to start this thought process, because it's one we're seeing more and more, and I'm sure we're going to hear from the applicant shortly about this balance as well, and what's possible and what's not. So I wanted to ask you first, Peter. Thanks. And Jason, I also wanted to hear from you.
All right. Are there any further questions of staff? If there are none, I'll open the public hearing, and I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first. Please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. You know, I think that's fine, just so I have a sense. How many of you would like to speak on this item? I think, so we just, we just have a couple speakers. That's fine. We can, we can go out of order then. So, yeah, and please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Diane Hofstedt, 610 Ramsey Street. It's good to be back in front of this robust group of people asking very good questions about our community. I'm here to talk about 80 West Broadway. The St. Anthony West neighborhood is agreeing with the particular proposal and the variances that were requested. And in response, we have some requests of our own. As you may be aware, that this is a very active corner with 26,000 vehicles that pass through Monday through Friday, and 15,000 on Marshall Street. So one of our concerns, of course, is the amount of traffic. So the question of retail, as you suggest, Mr. Rockwell, was a comment that was not discussed at our meetings, because we believe that it is really a difficult corner to have any kind of retail that would involve movement of vehicles and pedestrians through the area. We do have a request, a number of them, in fact, 14 of them, if you will note on the letter that we've submitted. And this is in our conversations with our Soheim Group, who we believe will be good friends and good neighbors, that they do not find any issues with the 14 items that we have asked for. We're very concerned about security, traffic, and, and our neighbors. And we consider our neighbors to be 1029 bar, and, and we would like to see them continue at their existing location and be able to provide parking and convenience for not only our community, but people who want to come into our neighborhood. We have a nice ride station adjacent to this location, and we'd like to keep it. It's very well-used. We, of course, are encouraging, as Ms. Bender may note, much more use of not only pedestrian, but biking in the area. And so having the nice ride stations has actually helped us for that. We are looking forward to having community space within the building so that we can hold our numerous meetings within the building. And I would welcome any questions, if there are any. I would just add that we did not discuss the commercial or retail, because it was an addition to the information after we conducted our three neighborhood meetings. And so that was not part of our discussion, but in previous discussions with other kinds of proposals, we did not encourage or request that retail be allowed on this corner, because it already is active, and the impact of the tremendous amount of traffic, as I suggested. So if people have questions, I'd be glad to answer.
All right. Doesn't look like we have any questions at the moment, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And we can move on. And, yes, please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Sarah Klein. I work with Soheim Companies, and I am a Minneapolis resident. I live at 5339 Pleasant Avenue. I just want to thank you for your time today, Commissioners. So we are in agreement with the city recommendations, aside from Item D, number one, incorporating commercial space. We have a few concerns with this, and after meeting with the neighborhood three times, emailing back and forth, and it's clear to me that the, the parking and pedestrian traffic on this intersection is quite challenging, and that was their biggest concern with any part of our project, was the parking and added traffic from more residents in the neighborhood. So we do support the neighborhood voice, as Diane spoke to not adding retail to this location. I do have some more notes here. Our project adds eyes to the street 24/7. There's constant activity in our building, or residents don't walk away at 5:00 PM when a business, a commercial business might close. And I think we're really concerned, too. Element Pizza does, or the, the commercial space that is currently on the block, does act as the mixed-use, which fits into our, our development as far as being an amenity and additional customers for this, this mixed-use. The minimum parking availability on those two streets. And to be honest, what is the economic viability of a business in that location with so much traffic moving at fast rates? I don't, I see an issue with cars stopping and moving and trying to slow down at that intersection to get into a business storefront.
All right.
We'll be available for questions if you have them.
All right. Commissioner Slack.
Yeah, I don't know if there's a question for the applicant or maybe even staff. Did you do any market analysis to determine viability of commercial and/or has the city looked at as part of the Small Area Plan market analysis for, for commercial activity? In theory, I agree, commercial activity, you know, first-floor uses activate streets. It's just, this corridor from the river all the way up to Central, there's probably less than 10 commercial businesses on Broadway. And there's a reason. And I don't think it's the lack of cars, because there's a lot of cars, there's a lot of transit. I just don't, and I don't know what it is. I don't know why, you know, businesses, more one-story or standalone businesses exist along a really long stretch of roadway. And so I was just wondering, is there some market data that sort of justify these recommendations or your, your proposal?
We, we only have some anecdotal evidence, asking small, small-business owners, particularly small coffee shops, would you choose to be in this location? They said, no, there's not enough parking, and it's not, the traffic isn't slow enough for cars to pull off and comfortably park and come into a business there. I don't know what the city planner said.
The city, as far as I'm aware, has not done any market analysis in this location. I don't know if any was done as a part of the Small Area Plan. I will say that that's one tool that we use in considering recommendations like this, but we're also planning for a condition that may not yet exist. And that might mean a different configuration for Broadway. That might mean a different marketplace in this area sometime in the future that would support a retail space in this location, whether or not that market exists today, so...
We should, we should probably just have everyone speak once before we, before we get too, too far along.
Well, I can answer the question about the Small Area Plan.
Okay.
And the development along University and, and Marshall. So their Catholic elder care will be doing an expansion, and so that will include a coffee shop and some more retail along that area, not directly on Broadway, but on Second. And so it would add more, I think, more pedestrian traffic, at least along Second Street. And maybe that might explain or add some vitality within, in that neighborhood.
All right. Thank you. And, all right, are there any other questions? Commissioner Vreeland. We, Commissioner Vreeland, we should conclude the public hearing before we...
Sorry.
Before, before we move into a motion. I might just ask, and I don't know if this is a question for you or for your architect, but have you looked at all our, either the, the spaces along the Broadway or Marshall frontage designed in a way that at a future date, they could be converted, like those walk-up units? Is, is the design such that that, that could happen at a future date?
I'll let Craig speak to that, but I also do want to point out the history of this particular corner, and city might be able to speak to this, too, is the failed businesses that have already been there and have not been successful. So that might speak a little bit to the commercial space.
Commissioners, my name is Craig Hartman. I'm the architect of record with Momentum Design Group. All along both Broadway and Marshall, we have a lot of glass. You know, the idea was that we wanted that building to share in the activity between the street front and the inside, both, in both directions, frankly, both the activity within our building as well as the activity in the street. The units along Marshall, we have three units there. They're designed as live-work units, where they could house a photographer, potentially an architect, something where they're not necessarily selling retail merchandise, but yet it'd be a great sort of access directly from the sidewalk. Somebody can walk up, visit their small business, you know, single proprietor-type product. Those are, those, all three of those units are designed in that way to sort of facilitate that use, so...
All right. Thank you. Are there any further questions of the applicant? Commissioner Rockwell.
Totally changing subject. Could you just talk briefly about what the exterior lighting idea is on the building in general? I mean, I, this was something that occurred to me, and then I see it's also in the St. Anthony West.
Commissioner, did you say lighting or cladding?
Lighting.
Lighting.
Yes.
Okay. On both the, again, Marshall and Broadway facades, we've got these long linear porches. We've kind of called them porches, indoor-outdoor space, both in front of the live-work units as well as in front of our common space. They have sort of deep saffits over them, so we'll have recessed lighting along both of those facades. In addition to along 11th, lighting along that, along that corridor as well. Basically, probably like an up-down lighting in that area, as well as landscape lighting all the way around, so...
Great. Thank you. Okay. If there are no further questions of the applicant, I think we have at least one other speaker. Is there anything you'd like to add? And if so, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Bob Margul, and I live at 610 Fourth Street Northeast St. Anthony Neighborhood. And I, I guess I wanted to come down and express my frustration with the, the efforts that the neighborhood had put in, into their SAP, their Small Area Business Plan, over the last couple of years. A lot of time and energy and money went into developing, developing a program that, that took a look at the future of our neighborhood and what we'd like it to look like. And no sooner was the ink dry on that, that document than, you know, we had an interested developer come in and basically want to, I guess, go in conflict with, with the SAP. But, well, I wanted to just have a few seconds to read a letter that I had given to the St. Anthony Board this past Thursday at a board meeting, and, and I did want to make a, a comment from one of my neighbors who was on the board for many years, and he wanted to, I guess, challenge the commission to see a show of hands in how many people had actually taken a look at this smaller area plan that St. Anthony West had developed. I was wondering if I could see a show of hands. Thank you. I'll, I'll start out here. It says, "Dear Organization Board Members, Attendees at Monday, Monday's Land Use Meeting were asked to convey their thoughts to our board on the proposed development located at the intersection of Marshall and Broadway Streets Northeast. I'd like to open this communication by asking board members, board members, whether or not the function of neighborhood organization is to represent the collective thoughts of its members, or is it the responsibility to speak to the community at large? Over the past couple of years, not only were all of you aware, but many of you were actively participating in the development of the St. Anthony West City-manded Small Area Plan. With that involvement came an understanding of the time, time consumed, energies expended, and dollar expenditure required by the community to develop a comprehensive SAP plan. Looking back retrospectively, we can all, we all should recall, the first and most important element of the Small Area Plan was community outreach. With that challenge in hand, our committee had set out with an expressed neighborhood goal of engaging all residents in a citywide effort to help plan and define our futures. Over a period of many months, we collectively wrestled with many elements involved in this project, but eventually we birthed a collective plan that reflected input from an aggregate of active and involved St. Anthony West neighborhood residents. Today, we might ask the board members to seriously and honestly review the expressed concerns brought by our neighbors over this project. We might ask, where is the commitment to follow through on our community's two-year effort in developing a business plan that addressed our needs and not the needs of builders and developers? What will the future hold in store for our unique residential area under the guns of aggressive developers if we abandon our plan? Look no further than down the road at our neighbors of Marcy Homes that have spent well over $150,000 in individual contributions attempting to defend their rights for a livable riverfront community free of a planned series of 25- to 40-story office, office buildings and residential towers. Sincerely, Bob Margul." So that's my concern, there are many, but I, I think the biggest thing that really sticks in, in my craw is the, the fact that we put all the time and energy to, to take a look at the future and only to have that, it seems as if everyone's back was collectively turned on that, on those efforts. So with that, I'll close. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. And is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? See, no one. I will close the public hearing, and Commissioners, we have several applications before us. Are there any further questions? Or would someone like to start things off with... Are there any further questions, or would someone like to start things off with a motion? Commissioner Vreeland.
I would move staff recommendations A, B, C, and E.
All right. Commissioner Vreeland has moved staff recommendation for items A, B, C, and E. Is that correct? Let me just sign that here. A, B, C, and E. So you're leaving out variance D. Is there a second? Sorry, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion to approve items A, B, C, and E? Commissioner Magrino.
I guess I just want to ask, did Commissioner Vreeland mean to leave out variance C rather than D?
I believe the FAR variance, that's D, that's the one you're leaving out. Is that correct?
The numbering might be different than the different reports.
Ah, that's how they go. Okay, sorry. Never mind.
So to clarify, the motion is on the rezoning, the conditional use permit for height, the setback variance, and the site plan review. Am I interpreting that correctly?
Yes, and D was the majority of our previous discussion, yes.
The condition for commercial space. All right. Any discussion on that motion? If there is none, Commissioner Magrino.
Well, I guess I'll just speak briefly to the last gentleman who spoke there, that does sound frustrating, that the city encouraged you to do that for a couple of years and then ultimately just filed it instead of adopting it. I think we have talked a lot about small-area plans in the past couple of years since I've been on the commission, and it does seem to be a source of frustration that we let neighbors and neighborhood organizations spend tens of thousands of dollars and hundreds and hundreds of hours of staff time on those. And then, I don't know, it seems like we could maybe think of a better outlet for community activism than letting folks adopt the very specific kind of height maps and density maps that end up with those, because a lot of times they're not things that we can enforce very easily.
All right. Thank you. Is there any further discussion? If there is none, clerk, please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Cronzer?
Aye.
Lipkeep here?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Vreeland?
Aye.
Eight-zero.
And that motion carries. And then finally, we have Item D, the FAR variance. Is there a motion on that? Commissioner Rockwell.
All right. I'm drafting on the fly here, so we'll, might have to redraft orally. So I will move to approve variance to increase the maximum floor area ratio without the staff suggested condition, but with a condition that a space be designed on the ground floor so that it can be used, to be accessible by the public, you know, if warranted. I can maybe redraft that, but the intent that I'm getting at here is to have a space that can be used by residents by the public if there is a use for the public, and I could see that use being a commercial use, a community gathering use, but with a separate entrance from the outside. And I'm not going to be the architect on this, but for example, as the ground-floor plan is currently drawn, one could simply put a door into the yoga space from the outside, and that presumably has a door from the inside as well. And so that would be accessible directly from the street. It would be accessible from within the building and could respond to an evolving neighborhood.
All right. Is there a second? You have a motion and a second, Mr. Wittenberg.
Commissioner, if I could just clarify whether that space would require a street-facing entrance today, or just be adaptable so that it could be added in the future?
I would be, my intent was to require a street-facing entrance that could remain locked much of the time, but that could essentially on a dime be used as a community gathering space tomorrow if the need were to arise.
All right. Commissioner Sweetsie.
Thank you. My concern about that kind of an amendment is that it's a little bit vague, and it leaves it all up to the property owner to manage. The space that Commissioner Rockwell mentioned in the, I think it's in the Abitane Building, you know, that's a really good model of that cafe is open till about 5:00, and then the restaurant opens, there's a gym there, and all three of those things are very much open to the public. That might work for a senior housing development in the way that it might not for something like this, but I'm actually supportive of the staff recommendation. I'm reminded of the other buildings when we had heard from members of the public further down Marshall Street, and one of the things that they talked about was not having anything that they could walk to for commercial space. So I don't know if the right thing is a nail salon or a Subway place, or I'll leave that to other people, but I do think that at this busy intersection, in this busy corridor with all these apartments coming online in that area, that there will be a need for some things, and I think 900 square feet, I think, is the recommendation, and to me, that makes sense.
All right. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Magrino.
Yeah, I would agree with Commissioner Sweetsie. I think in this case, a specific 900 square feet for commercial is, it's not going to make or break this project, and I just look around the city, and there's a lot of places where we kind of have dropped the ball around streetscapes and what it's like when you're walking by, and I think if we just condition it on being something open to the public, it's just going to end up as a conference room. But I think requiring it to be commercial in this case would be, I think it's doable.
And Commissioner Slack, then Commissioner Vreeland.
Yeah, I'm in support of the motion, obviously. I seconded it. You know, I think that the challenge here is collectively, we all need to rethink what commercial is going to look like in the future, and we know the challenges that are out there now, but I think, I go back to the conversation we had at Committee of the Hall and talking about the North Loop as it started to develop, and the fact that as a neighborhood association, planning zoning committee, we absolutely, inevitably required commercial in every building that went in, absolutely. You know, can't do it without commercial. And, you know, I lived across from a building that didn't have commercial for seven years, and it finally got commercial, and there's not commercial there now, and this is maybe 12 years ago. So if we want commercial and we want activation, we're going to have to live with the fact that there may not be anything there in the short term or in the long term, which I don't think goes to the intent of what we're trying to do here. I do think having flexibility to allow commercial or to allow public use or to allow, you know, the residents to just take over the space or to allow public meetings is a good way to think about it. What are the exact, what does that look like from a design standpoint? What does that look like from a functionality standpoint? How do you program and use a space like that? I'm not sure, but in this specific case, I feel like that's a better way to go than to require commercial, because this is a challenging intersection. Even across the street, going down Marshall is more commercial-friendly than this corner to me. Element's there, Element does a good business, they're a small business. It's not really a walkable business, unfortunately. You know, I think a lot of people that go there actually do drive there, and so I would see commercial really struggling here. Now, the flip side of that, long-term, you know, are there opportunities for redevelopment along this quarter? There's a lot of residential, you know, I think we'd be challenged to take out residential to do redevelopment. There is a bank across the street that seems like maybe in the long-term a good redevelopment site, and I do see commercial working there, but this site is just challenging for me to think about commercial on the first floor. Plus, it's not really first floor, everything's elevated, I think, off the sidewalk level, if I'm not mistaken. So I'll support the motion.
And Commissioner Vreeland, did you have anything to add?
I just wanted to note that C and D are flipped in the electronic version and the paper version, and I think we're all talking about the same one, but for clarity and for the recording, C and D are different in the two different versions that got flipped.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying. Commissioner Rockwell.
I just wanted to echo what Commissioner Slack was saying and say, you know, I see a number of the, and add to it, I see a number of the projects that we have seen recently as sort of experiments in motion, and I am going to be looking at how they all operate. We've had a few of these live-work suggestions, and we've allowed some of these spaces in place of commercial, and I'm curious to see how they work. We've got these here, we've got a couple on Nicollet, we've got a couple up the street. The applicant said that they had apartments that were operating as live-work in the North Loop, and I biked over there, biked around like a creep in your alley and looked at all the apartments to see how they worked, and, you know, they were kind of working. And it was certainly more active than I expected. But, you know, that's, I guess I am just saying this on the stand for the applicant to say, you know, I'm looking at this, we're looking at this, and hoping this works, and does activate the community and act as a community asset and act as something that brings energy to the neighborhood and increases the pedestrian accessibility to other places, and then maybe this can be transferred to something that is more, even more vibrant and accessible. But we're in a little bit of an experimentation phase, and that's a tough one. So good luck.
Commissioner Lukey-Peer.
Yeah, I think this one is a tough one, and I wonder, and the question that I have in the back of my mind, is it just a matter of having kind of a critical mass of things for people to want to walk to? I mean, I'm over at the library with kitty-corner from this all the time with my kids, and darn if it wouldn't be awesome if there's an ice cream shop we could walk to after dropping off a stack of books. You know, I mean, there's a kind of a thing where there's nowhere to walk, so there's not a lot of walking traffic that maybe would support more businesses being on the avenue, or I guess it's the street on the side of the river. So I'm a little bit torn, because I wonder, is it, we're looking at a situation today where if we kept the momentum going with this, it might be entirely different things, you know, tomorrow, you know, and especially with more people being bike-savvy and wanting walkable communities and putting a high density of people on this corner with really nowhere for them to walk to, except the same library I go to, so at least there'll be less parking. I just, I'm a little bit hesitant about dismissing this condition so quickly, just because of the fact that it seems like there might be a situation where not having it here means we won't ever have it in adjacent blocks down Broadway Street, because there's not enough to make people get out of their cars. Like, if there's an art crawl, you always see people walking along here for the art crawl, and I always think, where are they walking? They always have to get in their car and drive somewhere to get a meal. So I almost feel as though maybe that's the bigger issue here, and if we're cutting ourselves short in that perspective in the long run, by looking at the conditions today and businesses who are so used to relying on automobiles for their clientele that they can't envision what a different clientele might look like. So I guess, I think that's where I'm kind of wrestling with this issue right now.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so we have a motion. Commissioner Magrino.
Quick question for the applicant.
Yeah.
I'm sort of flipping through my mind here. Are there any Solheim projects that have retail on the ground floor?
Our very first project had retail on the ground floor.
Where was that?
It was 3021 Holmes Avenue South, right in Uptown, in a very active pedestrian zone.
Okay. Does that currently have?
It does still currently have commercial space there.
We also did it at Seven West.
Oh, right.
Which was over at Seven Corners.
Okay.
That one, we never were able to rent, and we converted to studio apartments.
Okay.
So it pays more taxes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So again, we have a motion and a second to approve Item D, the FAR variance, striking the condition that's listed in the staff report and replacing it with a condition that a space is designed on the ground floor that is accessible to the public, has a street-facing entrance, you know, can be adaptable to commercial in the future. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Cronzer?
Aye.
Lipkeep here?
No.
Magrino?
No.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
No.
Vreeland?
Aye.
So it's five yeses, three nos.
Right, and that motion carries, and that concludes our discussion on Item 8, also concludes our meeting for today. We have Committee of the Hall on Thursday, and we are adjourned.